Mike, can you hear me?
Uh, I can.
I can't hear you.
You cannot hear me?
Hear him. I can hear Mike.
I can't hear Amy either.
Yeah, I can hear Amy.
Is your computer itself on mute, Aaron? That's what mine was doing. Of course, you wouldn't be able to hear me.
All right.
I'm so smart.
Nora, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
I can't hear you.
I'll go down and see if he's... I'll run down there.
We can all hear you.
I can't hear anybody.
Is your computer on mute? Not your platform, but your computer.
Well, the mute is up on the monitor. And I'm unmuted there.
Because if you accidentally muted this guy, it'll mute that then. It's like you got a lot of tech support coming.
Oh.
No.
You good?
No, you.
Did not figure it out?
You know this better than I do. You're very techie.
So, guessing. Guessing your actual computer.
I've been on what the nurse will do.
Is on mute. Mike, can you say something?
Hello, how are you? I can hear you just fine.
No.
I can hear you too. Hey, um.
Testing, testing.
Yep, we can hear you.
You can hear me, Amy?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. You're good?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, Jan.
Does he need to use my device?
No, Nora, I can figure out.
I would restart Sarin's whoever. I'll call Matt.
I could hear you.
Okay.
But they couldn't hear.
Can you hear us now, Dr. Shutey?
Hello?
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. We're good now.
Okay. All right, I'm going to search.
Anything about Bob? Darren?
What?
Did you hear anything from Bob?
Uh, I did hear something from him, but he didn't say anything about not attending the meeting.
Okay, is everyone able to see the vision and mission?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, great, then we are good to go.
Do you want to give a couple of minutes for Bob, or do you want to go ahead and start, Darren?
I'm gonna text him here.
Sorry, I was having trouble logging in.
Do we have a video for Karina?
Sorry, I was having trouble logging in.
Bobby? I can. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Uh, Bob is supposed to be joining.
There we go. Okay, Bob is in.
Okay, let's go ahead and start, and I'll call this meeting into order. This is the time and the many places for the May 4th regular board meeting. Welcome to all of you who are viewing us live on Zoom, and welcome to those of you who will be watching the board meeting in a delayed video at a later time. Uh, please remember that we do have public comment even though there isn't a signup sheet. Have you received any requests for comment, Paulette?
I have not.
Okay, we'll see if anybody has a comment from the audience when we get to that. Please read with me the mission for the Marshalltown Community School District. We develop learners who have the knowledge, skills, positive mindset, to successfully pursue a meaningful future. Personalized learning experiences. And please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Yes, in the personnel section, we have a request for consideration of early retirement for Mrs. Deb Holzapel, who currently is an assistant principal at Marshawn High School. And Nora has some additions as well.
Yes, I also, um, in the yellow highlights, you can see I added one resignation of a coach, and then, um, a total of four new positions for teachers. Three of the, or I'm sorry, two of the four are internal transfers, and the other two are external people coming into the district, all highlighted in yellow.
Okay, would you point those out again when we go through the consent agenda, please?
Absolutely.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Seconded.
Heitman Faltis, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The motion carries seven zero. Mr. Sodders?
Well, we have quite, uh, quite a lot to recognize tonight, which is a good thing. So, we, so much of it has to do with our, uh, obviously, our seniors this year have gone through a year, I, I would say, unlike any senior, seniors in high school have gone through for at least a hundred years uh, with the situation with COVID-19. So, uh, Marshalltown Mayor Joel Greer proclaimed Tuesday, May 5th, 2020, so tomorrow, as Marshalltown Senior Class, or May is Marshalltown Senior Class Month. Showmo Madison Insurance and IMT Insurance donated $500 to the District Nutrition Department, uh, and that was in order to thank them for what they've been doing since school closure with continuing to feed students throughout the community. The, uh, we have Teacher Appreciation Week, May 4th through 8th this week. And I believe we have a video, uh, to go along with that, uh, Amy. Um, we decided as an administrative team to, um, put together a, uh, I guess, a performance of a poem by Pella Superintendent Mark Whitmer, uh, called "A Child's in Need of Us", and, uh, hopefully, we'll be able to play it for you here. But yeah, so enjoy.
Dear Marshalltown Community School District staff, words can't adequately describe the gratitude that we have for all of you and your continued efforts to serve the school community of Marshalltown during these difficult and challenging times. This week marks the annual Teacher Appreciation Week. We're not afraid to brag about our teachers because we truly believe we have some of the best educators in the state of Iowa. The passion, purpose, pride, and dedication you bring to your important roles are to be commended.
We also have the most talented support staff. Bus drivers, monitors, paras, custodians, food service employees, secretaries, administrative assistants, the tech team, and beyond. We thank you all. We couldn't serve these children and families without each and every one of you. We'd like to share a poem titled "A Child's in Need" by Mark Whitmer.
The poet looked among the crowd and saw the people there. And as he spoke, he really sensed a cold collective stare.
The doubt was ever present as he spoke of what they'd do. It hit its height just as he said, "The child's in need of you."
Well, I'm the one who drives the bus, a job without much fame. I don't receive much glamour, but I get my share of blame.
I can't make too much difference. I'm lowly, don't you see? I can't believe the statement made, "A child's in need of me."
But you're the first they see each day. You set the tone for school. And safety is a huge concern. It's got to be the rule.
No matter what the world might think, or they say, or do, what you must understand is this, "A child's in need..." "...of you."
Then what of me?
And safety is a huge concern. It's got to be the rule.
No matter what the world might think, or they say, or do, what you must understand is this, "A child's in need of you."
Then what of me? I cook and serve the food each day. They criticize each portion, and... And oh my, the things they say.
You talk about a job that's got no glitz in what we see. It's hard for me to fathom this, "A child's in need of me?"
You have a chance to give each child a smile once a day, and it may be the only one they see at work or play.
And what they eat is so entwined with what they learn and do. You'd best believe you count a lot, "A child's in need of you."
Well, I'm the one who cleans and sweeps. I pick up after all. What messes make life difficult, it's me that they all call.
A job like this is no big deal. I doubt it can be, that in the role which I described, "A child's in need of me."
You set the tone for us all. The climate while you're here depends on how you see your job and what you hold so dear.
When you exhibit pride and care in all you say and do, the patrons of this building see, "A child's in need of you."
Hey, I work an office job. Complaints I he, I daily hear from parents and staff and others whom I may not hold so dear. The forums, the phone, the messages that stack up to my knee, I fail to be convinced at all, "A child's in need of me."
To most, the word that's written large, "It's all about your face", is help because that's what you provide while working at your space. You solve concerns and problems large. You do what you must do. Without you, consternation reigns. "A child's in need of you."
They call me an associate. I help staff in class. To think I make a difference, well, I'll just have to pass. The life each kid will see at home is paramount, you see. I'm sorry, but I'm not convinced, "A child's in need of me."
With individuals you work or maybe in a group, so daily, you will touch a life, and that is quite a coup. For kids in circumstances tough, well, this is what you do. You give a falling young one hope, "A child's in need of you."
For sure, my job is tougher now. It's really not the same. This teaching's not what it once was, and I just get the blame. I don't think anything will help these kids that now I see. So maybe once, but now I doubt, "The child's in need of me."
It's you who give their lives a chance to be the very best. Your efforts toward their learning, great, will make their lives be blessed.
You maximize life's chances with a goal, a dream or two. Without you, it's not possible, "A child's in need of you."
The group got awfully quiet as they contemplate the year. They think about those special kids when each two eye a tear. Without a lot of noise and hype or making too much fuss, the only thought that matters now, "A child's in need of us."
To every single one of you, thank you. We hope to see you soon. Stay healthy.
So, thank you for, um, for, I know that's a little bit of a long video, but we did want to put in that effort to show that we, you know, recognize how important teachers' jobs are, as well as everybody else who's, uh, who works in our district, who, um, who's worked, you know, has an impact on all of the education of all of our students. So, we want to thank everybody for that. And that video, by the way, will be up on the district's YouTube page, um, and I'll be sharing it out, uh, here after the meeting. April 19th through 25th, so last week, was National Volunteer Week. We, I don't think I need to describe how much Marshalltown is, uh, as a community and our district specifically has, um, you know, benefited from volunteerism, you know, for the past several years, especially with the tornado, and now, uh, with all the work being done around the response to COVID-19. And I believe it's also School Board Month this month.
Take this time to recognize our school board as part of, uh, National School Board Recognition and Appreciation Month. Our seven board members be Sean, Mike, Karina, Bob, Sarah, and Jan. Thank you for your commitment to living up to our district vision and mission and the countless hours that you put in to do our best to provide transparency and positive public engagement as well. I think a lot of people don't realize beyond the two board meetings a month, the amount of time and effort that you put in serving on subcommittees throughout the year and, and attending special board meetings and work sessions as well. So, thank you for all you do on behalf of Bobcat students, parents, employees, and the community as a whole.
The, uh, video that we watched was certainly, um, equivalent to the kinds of things that I say in my emails to staff and to all of the employees of the district during Teacher Appreciation Week, because everybody in our district is a teacher in some way. Maybe it's the custodian who high-fives, uh, an elementary student every day, and the student looks forward to that, or the paraeducator who seeks a child out and asks how their night went at home. We certainly, um, have a remarkable staff in this district. And since 2007, IASB has led the charge in celebrating school board members during each May. After 13 years focused on recognizing board members, they've decided to change things up this year and to thank educators, administrators, and district staff for their Herculean efforts, especially during this time of crisis. In the midst of the global crisis, Iowa Public Schools are continuing to teach, to feed, and meet the needs of K-12 students. 93.7% of students are enrolled in schools statewide. This year's IASB motto is "Public School Proud", and our board wants to thank our Marshalltown Community School District staff for working through the COVID-19 crisis. This includes 592 educators, teachers, paraeducators, and secretaries for innovating to provide online learning and support for students. 58 food service staff for providing meals for students and families. 62 transportation staff for delivering meals to students and families. One superintendent and 15 principals for providing excellent leadership. 38 central office staff for managing day-to-day operations. 41 operations and maintenance staff for ensuring buildings and facilities are safe, clean, and sanitized. Your efforts have not gone unnoticed and have been essential to providing our patrons with the support they need throughout this challenging and complex situation. The men and women of serving Marshalltown Community School District are fantastic. Thank you all. Did we miss the high school math team recognition, or did I fall asleep?
We, no, we, uh, that, that is, uh, our, I believe, our last and, uh, our last very special recognition tonight. Uh, it looks like the entire math team is on. The Marshalltown High School math team, uh, had an impressive performance last weekend, a weekend before this most previous one, uh, when they qualified for the Midwest Regionals competition. Uh, they had to have their state contest virtually, uh, but that didn't stop them from having a very impressive, uh, go at it. So, uh, today I have, uh, Marshalltown High School XLP teacher, Susan Fritzell, and then the math team members, Zach Swartz, Trevor Ketchum, Jay Drummer, Merrick Jablonsky, and Derek Ketchum. And, uh, I think we'll have, um, Susan speak first, and then she'll introduce the students to you.
Extended learning programs' purpose is to, you know, find engagement for our very high-ability kids. And so, these five students all accelerated, um, their math learning by taking Algebra I as, uh, seventh graders, took Calculus as juniors, as seniors. They are, or they will be, in, uh, dual-credit statistics. So, that's one way we, um, challenged our high-level math kids. The second way we've challenged them is having them, um, join our math team. And the math team's all about giving higher, higher-level problem-solving abilities to our students. And we're really thankful for Rob Griffin, who coaches the math team. And he, Rob is a certified math teacher and also, um, very much a regular sub at the high school. So, I'm gonna let the kids tell you about their experiences with math team. And I'll introduce them each separately. So, first up is Derek Ketchum, who is a ninth grader. Go ahead, Derek.
So, I joined the math team this year, and we meet about every Monday, about 15 people. We meet with Mr. Griffin, and he gives us all a good math problem that challenges us. And then, once we all have it solved, then he will go over the problem, explain how he, how to get the answer, and then he'll give us some cool tips on how to problem-solve, uh, any difficult problem.
Thanks, Derek. Now, we're gonna hear from Jay Drummer, who's a senior. Jay, are you there? Okay, we're gonna skip forward then. Merrick, are you available?
Yes, I am here.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, I'm gonna start the state contest, so it was virtual. And before the actual competition, we got a so-called power question, and that was a team question with like 10 different parts that we all worked on ahead of time and submitted. And then, when the actual competition came, it was a Zoom call with over 160 people from around Iowa and Missouri. And we were all in that group so they could see us. And they gave us a link from PDF of questions, and then pulled it open on our computer and wrote down our answers on the actual forums that we used in competitions that we printed out. And then, we gave those to our parents who acted as chaperones. They entered them in an online forum, and then that was it. So, it was the same thing as the real competitions, except the questions they gave us links to instead of actually having them written down.
Thanks, Merrick. Merrick is a junior. And now, I guess we'll go up to Zach, who is a senior.
Yeah, so the next level is gonna be the regional contest in Kansas City. Um, how we got there, we placed fifth as a team overall at the state competition. Um, individually, Derek placed 10th amongst ninth graders. Merrick placed ninth amongst 11th graders. And then, for the seniors, I placed fourth, Trevor placed seventh, and Jay placed 11th. Um, we're not entirely sure how the next competition's gonna be run. Um, but yeah, uh, it would be in Kansas City.
Thanks, Zach. It would have been in Kansas City. We're pretty sure it's just going to be canceled now. And I should back up. What Jay was going to tell you was that to, to qualify for the state contest, the students had to go to a Saturday event during the regular season, which runs October through March, and, um, score at least in the top, well, get at least a 50% or better on one of the tests. The tests are really challenging. So, these five had done that, and that's why they qualified for the state contest. And last, we have, um, Trevor Ketchum, who's a senior. Go ahead, Trevor.
All right, so I'm gonna talk a little bit about what we've all gained from math team. So, the first and most obviously, obvious thing is we've all learned a lot of math. And, uh, all of us have been very interested in math, most of us since a young age. And, you know, math team has given us an opportunity to not only push ourselves, but also to learn a lot of new information that we wouldn't have had other ways. that we wouldn't have had other ways. Also taught us a lot of teamwork. We've all been on the team since March, and we've been working together and became very good friends because of it. And one of the last things is, you know, all three of the seniors on our team, we're all going to Iowa State next year because we've all become very good friends. And we really want to continue our friendship through college and through life. So math team means a lot to all of us, and it was
I think you're muted, Mrs. Fritzell.
Jay's back. Jay, did you want to say anything else? You have to unmute. I guess not. Jay's there, though. So anyways, thank you all. Yep, go ahead, Jay.
Wait, did you hear me earlier? Because I don't view it.
No.
I think my Zoom glitched. What I was going to say was, we meet monthly on Saturdays for competitions to qualify for state. Then places like Iowa City, Cedar Rapids, and Waverly, it seems with six who compete, there's four rounds. There's a sprint round where you get an hour to answer thirty questions. There's a target round where you get two questions every ten minutes. A relay round where there's three questions, and the answer to one question helps, gives you a number for a variable for for the second question, and the same for the third question. And there's team rounds where the teams of six get, I think, twenty minutes to answer ten questions. And you have to score at least 50% or place at the competition to qualify for state.
Thanks, Jay. Any questions for these guys?
I don't have any questions, but I'd certainly like to congratulate them on their success and to wish them well, whether it be next year on math team again, or whether they're headed off to college. So good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Yes, congratulations.
Adam, do you have anything else?
Um, I don't believe so. Like I said, it's good when we have this much to recognize. So, but no, that's it for tonight, I believe.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, and let's move on to the consent agenda. Looking at the consent agenda, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of April 20th? Would you highlight the items and personnel for us again, please?
Yes. So what is highlighted in yellow is that were additions from today. So I will let Theron speak to Deb Holsapple.
Yeah, so Mrs. Holsapple, who's the assistant principal at Marsh Town High School, submitted her letter of early retirement resignation today. Deb has served the district for 27 years in a variety of roles, including she was a substitute teacher. She was a bilingual classroom teacher at Anson Middle School, as well as having served Woodbury and Marsh Town High School. She co-taught at Anson Middle School and the high school and served as a director of night school program at Marsh Town High School at one point prior to being asked to serve on the administrative team at Marsh Town High School, for which she is finishing her career. So on behalf of myself and the administrative team, we want to thank her for her 27 years of dedicated service to our students, parents, employees of the various buildings that she worked at, and the school community as a whole.
I also would like to briefly speak to the other two retirements on there. You'll see Sandy Fetters. She was a general worker for the Food Service Department for nine years. In the words of Director Lynn Large, "We thank Sandy for her nine years of service to the district. She had a spunky personality that made working with her interesting." And then Connie Jensen, a paraeducator, and this is directly from Principal Kyle Young. Connie has faithfully served Lenahan students, staff, and families for 10 years. Lenahan will definitely miss her dedication to the work, the relationship she's built with students and staff, and her positive attitude. She was willing to do anything to help our team and support our kids. Connie goes above and beyond expectations to ensure that everyone has a great experience. This includes organizing staff celebrations and supporting student groups and their various activities. She's been an instrumental supporter and organizer of our volunteer partnerships with Emerson. We wish her the very best in her retirement. The other additions that are on there, I would, Amy, if you could scroll down to that, David Hatch there is resigning as assistant high school girls' basketball coach. And then the other additions that are on there are on page four and five. Two new teachers coming into the district, both properly licensed. We're not contingent or waiting on anything there. One is for an open position at Lenahan in Special Ed. That's Lacy James Otten or Otten, and then Kramer Grimes, fifth grade at Lenahan. And then the two internal transfers listed here with Shay Hill. She will be going from reading interventionist to ELL, staying at Miller, replacing Brian Murphy, who is on the agenda as moving to instructional coach there at Miller. And then Joanna Ruddock going from Woodbury to second-grade teacher at Fisher.
Thank you.
Yep, those are the only changes. Yep.
Looking at interagency agreements and contracts, we have renewal contracts, two contracts for food service. We have a HumanX Ventures Coach Talent Project proposal in the amount of $9,600. HumanX Ventures Education Lab proposal in the amount of $17,000. And proposal from TFS for Education with Purpose and Career Tree Initial Development in the amount of $11,000. Looking at open enrollments, we have one out for the remainder of this year and one out for the next school year. Are there any items of note in bills?
No, there are none.
Any questions from board members? Also, the donation from Shomo Madsen Insurance and IMT Insurance in the amount of $500 to the District Nutrition Department, which Adam mentioned in our recognitions. We have two second semester graduates from MLA. Are there questions on any of the items under the consent agenda? May I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Heitman Miller, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries seven zero. Is there anyone in our audience who would like to comment during our public comments section? Moving on to the education component of our board meeting. Dr. Shudi, the pandemic response and emergency suspension of policy, please.
Yes, so I believe this is the third time now you've seen a resolution during the sequence of events piggybacking off Governor Kim Reynolds' declarations or recommendations for temporary and full closures of schools. So the resolution in and of itself isn't new. It's reaffirming some of the stuff that was previously adopted. This one's in conjunction with the recommendation to close schools for the remainder of the 2019-2020 school year. Yet reaffirms what our board has previously committed to, which is placing employees that otherwise wouldn't work when schools in session on administrative leave and paying them for the duration of time through their contract or closure. It also is affirming our district's decision to provide voluntary educational enrichment opportunities along with 87% of the other school districts in Iowa. It's further committing to holding our board meetings, though virtually in an open and transparent way for our communities and inviting for continued participation. And last but not least, committing our district to following the guidance of the Iowa Department of Education as it relates to developing and submitting a return-to-learn plan to the Iowa Department of Ed by July 1st of this year for reentry into the next school year. I would not anticipate us seeing another resolution until we get closer to possibly the time of reentry, depending on what recommendations or restrictions are placed on schools at that time.
Is that a guarantee, like no more board policies?
No, I just said I would not anticipate.
Are there any questions for Dr. Shudi? May I have a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
Don't move.
Second.
Heitman.
Balthus.
Balthus. Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries seven zero.
Can I?
Oh, go ahead, Pa.
Sorry to interrupt. Do we need to promote Bob to a panelist?
Yeah, I saw him hanging out there too, Paulette. I was going to say something, but you beat me to it.
Okay, yeah, because we can't hear him if he's just as an attendee. There he is.
I was lost, and now I found it was entirely my fault and had nothing to do with Amy. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
And could I get each of you to name first before you make the motion? I think that will help Paulette as well. Amy, expenses related to the CARES Act?
Yes. Okay, so April 6th, I brought forth an RFP that we had talked about would be once we received the devices back, we could really take a deep look into what was broken, lost, misplaced with some transition, not on our part, but if a student or family left the district. Since then, it has been the recommendation that we allow students to keep these devices throughout the summer. There is a plan to do like a virtual summer school. And beyond that, since we're just not certain of how things will look this summer and on into the fall, it makes a lot of sense for these families to just keep the Chromebooks so that we wouldn't have to ever get in a situation where we have to recheck out Chromebooks. But what we would like to do then is recommend that we purchase the full amount that I had suggested on April 6th of 820 devices. So I went ahead and I got those sealed bids back. The winner was CDWG, and they gave us a price of $217,000. And then they also went ahead and quoted us on some cases separately that don't exceed $25,000, but I thought I would include that price. So the total would be $237,800 that we would be spending of the CARES money. Originally, I thought this could come from a different fund, so it's nice that it looks like we'll have some funding available for this sort of emergency purchasing. Does anyone have any questions on that?
Yeah, I don't know if this is a question for you, Amy, or for Paulette, or Theron, or who, but can you, I mean, we say CARES funding. What are we talking about?
We estimate that we're going to get between $899,000 and $989,000. It's dispersed to district based on the title formula. We don't, we don't yet know what the process will be for actually receiving that funding or the timeline for that, but we think it's going to happen fairly quickly.
And it's basically emergency stimulus funding that was awarded schools through the CARES Act, which is much bigger, but it's the portion that was directed at schools to help with offset COVID-related expenses. And the Iowa Department of Education said that they're going to be very, very flexible in how districts choose to use those funds. But a lot of the intent was to help with the continuity of virtual and/or continuous learning.
Thank you.
One of the that came up last Yes. You've covered the computers and the cases. Then do we know that all the students getting these computers will have internet access by fall? Do we have a plan for making sure that's the case?
So that is my next point of discussion. And yeah, if we're done talking about the Chromebooks, I can go into it. So we have done a very in-depth internet survey. We asked a very basic question about whether or not people had home internet not connected to their phone. Now, there are probably four or five questions that we would love to accompany that, but we're really shooting for 100% people to respond, so we tried to keep it as simple as possible. What we're really seeing is the number of people who have internet or don't have internet at any given time fluctuates. Some of it based on what's happening economically around here. If people are losing their internet, deciding that they can't afford that bill. Obviously, they're choosing more basic necessities as they see. And then also, we have the inverse of people telling us they didn't have internet, and now they have gone ahead and gotten internet because they have found it as a need. So it is a moving target, and we have enlisted even this week more people to help us really reach out to these families. If there's a language barrier, and they just, like, sometimes they'll just hang up on us because they, we call them and we say hello, and they know it's English. So we've enlisted more people to help figure out exactly who doesn't have internet. And we're really going to dig into that. But what we can say is we know 365 families don't have internet. And we believe that up to 1,000 families don't have internet. So we're looking somewhere in that very large range, but we have gotten 85% response. So we still feel good about what we know, especially based on what we're kind of considering the priority students right now, which are students who are in high school and either a CEP student, so they're dual-enrolled, and they're trying to get that credit by the end of May, or they're on like a pass/fail system where they need to get that credit, and they're Or they're on like a pass fail system where they need to get that credit and they're in jeopardy of failing. So we've pinpointed a hundred and fifty kids to get those hotspots. And we have already passed out many this week and will continue the beginning of next week to get the rest of the hundred and fifty original hotspots that we passed out or that we ordered. Now, we've worked with Lisa Stevenson to come up with a list of elementary to eighth grade students who have been invited to summer school. And those kiddos, there's also about a hundred and fifty kids that would need internet to be able to do a full virtual summer school. So we feel that the cost is justified to ask for a hundred and fifty more hotspots. And in fact, because the devices themselves were under twenty-five dollars, they were about nine thousand, which is um something I had, I do have here the hotspots. They're a little over nine thousand. We actually went ahead and purchased them and we're um asking that you, oh, sorry if that was too fast. We're asking that you approve the Verizon data, which brings the the cost of the hotspots and the the Verizon data up to thirty-two thousand. We have looked into other options such as Kajit, which is much more expensive. So the plan is to get these two groups of students internet because there's more of a a time crunch and a reason why they really, you know, need it right now, obviously, understanding that this is becoming more of a need than anything. Um and then what we're doing is working with MediaCom and I'll present that plan um May eighteenth to try to deliver them a very comprehensive list of who doesn't have internet in this city and work with them so that we might um come up with a a partnership to get the rest of the kiddo's internet by the start of the school year.
And the the reason that that's really a priority now, and I know that there's efforts both at the state level and nationally to provide additional financial assistance in some way, shape, or form for that. But we're, we've been told by the Iowa Department of Ed that next year's return to learn plan will be required across the board. So whether we're virtual like we are right now, whether we're a hybrid of part face-to-face, part virtual, or whether we're face-to-face with additional restrictions based on social distancing and not having groups gather, you know, beyond a certain number. Uh it's gonna be required, so it's absolutely critical that we try to find at least short-term help to uh provide our students and families with access to the internet.
Amy, would you give us a summary? We've covered quite a few uh topics here um under the CARES Act. How many Chromebooks and what amount?
Okay, so we are looking at purchasing eight hundred and twenty Chromebooks. And that is for two hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred dollars is what that would cost. And then we would also plan to purchase some cases, which brings the total up to two hundred thousand thirty-seven dollars. And pretend I didn't say that. Two hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars. Okay, you get the point.
So the two seventeen is just for the Chromebooks and additional to that then would come to two thirty-seven eight hundred?
Yes.
Okay, so we're not doing cases at two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars?
No. Sorry.
Total of Chromebooks and cases.
The cost of the cases are twenty thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay.
And we think that by getting the cases, we're enabling ourselves to be much more mobile in the fall and protect these devices so that we don't have to turn around and buy more if we're going to send out more devices homeless students to younger grades.
So you are asking for Chromebooks and cases in the amount of two hundred and thirty-seven thousand eight hundred?
Yes.
And three hundred hotspots?
I'm asking for a hundred and fifty hotspots.
Okay, so
This is just a breakdown of the two different quotes that I have, but I just want a hundred and fifty hotspots for a total that includes the data of thirty-two thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars.
All right, are there other questions?
How much, yeah, A- A- Amy, how much data is that? Is that like a month, year?
It's unlimited for four months. So each, so what I'm asking is to, this hundred and fifty is for the summer school students. So I'm asking to get them through August with data. Now, I would come again in August if we need to keep these going to supplement. Um if MediaCom can't get into all the apartment complexes and that sort of thing. If we need to keep them going, then I would come back in August and ask you for approval to to further that data for more months.
And the, and and tell me a little bit more about what you're trying to get MediaCom to do for us. Can't hear you.
Looks like you're muted, Amy.
Mike, can you repeat that question one more time? I'm having the issue Nora does where if my audio is on, then you start talking, it mutes my computer. So if you would ask one more time, that would be great.
I'm just happy I'm not alone, sorry.
Okay.
Can you hear me now? Okay, you just muted again, but
You just muted.
But what I asked was, what are you, can you give me a little bit more detail on what you're trying um to get MediaCom to provide us?
I can chime in there real quick. MediaCom offers a um program called Connect C two C, Connect to Something or Other.
Compete, Connect to Compete.
Connect to, okay, go ahead.
Okay, so MediaCom offers Connect to Compete. That's nine dollars and ninety-five cents a month. Obviously, a tr- a cheaper version than thirty-nine ninety-nine is what we're paying for uncommitted data for a hotspot. So what we are working with them to do is to get actually rather than ask people to sign up with them, we are working to give them a list of people that we know don't have internet, then they call those folks, set up an appointment, they come in and they get them internet. And the reason we're working with them is because they'll not only call them and set that up, but then they'll also, they can guarantee if they can get it done by August and get everything installed for us. So that's obviously a much lower sticker shock than um purchasing a hotspot and then spending forty bucks a month on that hotspot. Instead, we'd spend ten if that's our choice um per child or per family, actually.
And so would this program be?
Let me change one thing, Mike, really quick, because I'm, I know I'm having, okay. Okay, now can you tell me again?
Okay. So um is this MediaCom program one that would be like permanent, like the school district would pay for internet for these families like in perpetuity?
Paulette, can you answer? Because I keep, I keep getting muted.
Yeah, um there are some criteria in order to be eligible for this program. You do have to be low income and I think you um cannot have been a MediaCom customer already. It's for new service, if I understand correctly. Um and and quite frankly, I'm, I'm not sure that we really know the answer to actually paying um MediaCom for that service. Is that the expectation, Amy, is that the district would pay that invoice, that bill? Or the?
We can't hear you.
Amy, do you wanna come over here? We can just swap this.
I can't hear you.
Amy, I can't hear you.
It's, yeah, it's not working, Amy. How about now? Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, so I would like to answer more of these questions on May eighteenth. But I know there are two options. And and I would only say answer the questions because I would like to be able to come up with an intelligent recommendation. But there are two options. One option is to give the list of people who don't have internet to MediaCom. They work with those folks. And they pay, the 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 families pay ten dollars a month. The other option is for us to foot the ten dollar a month bill. Um I think Dr. Shutey, and I do not want to speak out of turn here, but wants to see them have internet one way or another. That's all I'll say about that. So I think if we couldn't come up with an option where all these families can pay ten dollars a month, I think similar to a hotspot, we would do option B with MediaCom where we pay for the families to have internet, which would be cheaper than the hotspots. So it's either a bunch of hotspots to help supplement internet issues or stick with the three hundred hotspots and try to get possibly six hundred more families, six hundred to even a thousand more families to go to the MediaCom option. I believe with Des Moines, MediaCom has actually waived the has to be the first time they've set it up, i- unless they owe a lot of money to MediaCom. Um I think that it's pretty much a blanket approval of the list that I would send to them. So I'm, I'm just saying right now that I know MediaCom would be a cheaper option than to buy all of our families' hotspots, and I believe that Dr. Shutey
Lost ya.
Can you still hear me?
Can hear you now.
Ah, okay, so did that answer the question?
Yeah, I think, I think so. And didn't we, you're asking us to buy a hundred and fifty additional hotspots? Didn't we already buy some like a cup, a month or so ago?
Yes, the uh the hotspots originally were to provide to high school students that needed them to access concurrent enrollment courses they were, they were engaged in as well as uh seniors that needed access in order to get the credits necessary to graduate. And then other high school students who were working on credit-bearing courses, that was the focus. First hundred and fifty hotspots, which are still currently being disseminated. It wa- it's been determined that those hotspots plus these hotspots would be necessary in order to um provide a summer school experience for students K eight, I believe. Um and then there's going to be a need based on our current information for additional internet access that could range from that six hundred um student or family situation upwards to a thousand based on the survey information that we have right now. In the event that we have to use some form of virtual learning to reopen next year, um we're also concerned, even if we can reopen face-to-face, that based on the medical experts, that there could be a resurgence uh or a uh additional need to close for some period of time in conjunction with the flu season in November, December timeframe, so we just
So you have a hundred hotspots now and you're gonna get a hundred fifty more?
We have a hundred and fifty now. We're gonna get a hundred and fifty more, so we would need three hundred uh to get through the summer school.
And all of this money comes from this future approximately nine hundred thousand dollars that we think we're gonna receive from the federal government?
Correct, to support it. But there's also additional efforts cuz that well, that money truly was geared towards helping schools get through the remainder of the school year and we can backdate expenses that are COVID-related, additional expenses from March thirteenth through present. We don't know when the end date is, but I know from talking to Senator Grassley, it was basically to get through the summer and possibly to reopen in the fall. But we're hopeful that there'll be either additional federal stimulus or in talking to our state officials that, and legislators. Um you know, this is a problem statewide and nationally in terms of families and students not have reliable access to the internet, so something bigger is gonna have to happen in long term.
Well, I mean, the, what I think Theron probably would, if you have a thousand families that don't have internet and it's ten bucks a month for internet, I mean, there's ten thousand dollars a month or a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. And so what you're essentially talking about is increasing the size of our budget in the future by a hundred twenty thousand dollars a year to give, to make sure everybody has internet.
Yeah.
And so, you know, that could, there, there could be a good argument made for that, but it's something to talk about and be very deliberate about.
The intent isn't necessarily to do it in perpetuity as you were questioning, it's to help through this crisis phase where we're either partially or fully having to uh provide educational services digitally and virtually. The hopes would be eventually from a national and or state standpoint, they'd find a way to uh offset the cost for everybody to have access to internet because it's become such a basic need anymore for education, communications, um safe purchasing, buying and selling. Um I mean, you could think of a hundred different reasons, but we're just looking this, at this as a short-term emergency measure to help our students have an equal playing field in terms of accessing virtual learning. Knowing that there's potential that, you know, we're definitely gonna be forced to doing that or not offering anything uh for summer school, which will not be in the best interest of our students of poverty particularly. Um and then trying to position ourselves better in the event we have to do things differently next fall.
Would there be any possibility, and you're looking at getting three hundred hotspots and only using them for three or four months? Is there a possibility of getting some kind of buyback plan from Verizon?
Yes, we're actually, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, we are actually working with a company to purchase them refurbished so that the the price is a little lower. Right now, it actually isn't a little lower because it's um just, you know, good old supply and demand, but they do buy back and they haven't given us in a a dollar um amount for that buyback. I'm sure it's pennies on the dollar, but we would definitely shut off service when we deem it appropriate, possibly keeping some of them for some sort of a checkout program in libraries, which we've talked, I I've been told Josh talked for years about doing. Um and a lot of schools are looking at, obviously, it wouldn't be three hundred devices still, but a a much more manageable amount. Um so yes, we could sell some of the hardware back and we would not have those running into perpetuity.
Any other questions for Dr. Shutey, Paulette, or Amy?
I have one. Are there, I'm not expecting you necessarily have plans for all nine hundred thousand-ish dollars of the CARES funds. But are there other critical uh expenditures that might come along that this would potentially conflict with? That you've anticipated at this point?
We're in the process of identifying all of the, what we believe to be COVID-related costs. I would say the only thing that would be of urgent importance, which we're working on, is uh any access we can get to needed PPE equipment and uh cleaning supplies, which we had already been ordering prior to all of this. You know, for additional and continual deep cleaning, once we are able to return to school and hand sanitizer. But a lot of the other things that we're looking to code are related to professional development that we've either provided or intend to we've either provided or intend to provide to staff during this time as a result of not being at school and working eight hour days and that sort of thing.
So I I mean, I'll just say this, this seems to be as as important a priority as any other thing that that you've named. So thank you, thank.
May I have a motion to approve the expenses due to COVID nineteen, including Chromebooks and cases in the amount of two hundred and thirty seven thousand eight hundred. And hotspots for summer school students in the amount of thirty two thousand eight hundred and forty four.
So moved.
Second.
Untied Hernandez, is that correct?
Yes.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion carries seven zero. Back to you, Amy.
Okay, well, the fun doesn't stop. Um. I also on April sixth asked you to approve that I go forward with an RFP for our typical replacement cycle of Chromebooks. Um, we got several bids back as you can see. And our top recommendation is for CDW. Um, and this includes this three hundred and eighty nine thousand dollars includes um the Chromebooks, both the non-touch and the touch Chromebooks, twenty-three charging cards and four hundred and ten cases. So this is what we would typically do and what we have budgeted. And I just want to um point out that the licenses for this have already been purchased.
What licenses are you talking about?
Um, you get Google Chromebook licenses so that you can manage them from your admin council. So a few months ago, one of my first um questions to all of you was to request that we purchased the licenses early because they were discounted.
Yep.
So that's when we purchased those.
So the um the last thing we just approved was the purchase of eight hundred Chromebooks for two hundred seventeen thousand.
Yes.
And this is eight hundred Chromebooks and some other stuff for four hundred. And so we're talking about sixteen hundred new Chromebooks?
Yes, we are. Um, the the eight hundred is because we we sent home twenty-five hundred Chromebooks that we've never sent home before. And two of them were a model that are up for replacement next year that have been having problems. So we really expect a large breakage rate in those two models. So it was it's utmost, it's important for us. Am I, can you, can everybody still hear me?
Yep.
Okay, it's important for us that we purchase those so that we can really be ready for August. But this is the typical replacement and this is just the schedule that we've always been on. And we will sell the devices that um we were already going to sell and prepare them the way that we were already going to prepare them. So this is just saying um what we've already approved in the past will continue forward.
The uh Chromebooks that we deployed to elementary through intermediate school did not have protective cases uh that we provide for the devices that the middle school and high school kids take home. So that potentially could relate to some accidental um damage or, I guess, destruction. Um, I would imagine there's some.
Like seven thirty. Karina, Karina, can you hear us?
Yeah.
I think the uh this is a combination of touch and non-touch and I'm, I would expect that would increase the cost as well. Devices.
Yes, this is touch and non-touch as well as carts which are um in need of replacement as well. Um, and just to put some sort of stat to this, we've already gotten about a hundred devices exchanged in the last month um that are broken. So a hundred in a month, we just anticipate that we're going to have some more breakages and some of it or a lot of it is not at the fault of the kid. They're just older devices that weren't intended to be you know, jostled around, moved up and down, you know, carried by little kids um all day, every day. So um, some of it's just wear and tear that's going to happen and and that's for the one that we just asked for the COVID nineteen related funding. This is just to ensure that our devices stay up to date and in high quality as we've already, as you've all already approved this replacement cycle.
Other questions? Or do you want us to do the computer lab separate?
Sure, yes, it that is actually out of Dr. Stevenson's funding. So yes, that would make sense for us to to do them.
I have a motion to approve the Chromebook replacements, cases and carts in the amount of three hundred and eighty nine thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
So move for approval, Miller.
Second.
Miller, untied. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, my last. My last um request is for the replacement of the project Lead the Way High School Computer Lab. Um, it is due for replacement. We got a couple quotes in and for twenty-five new computers, that is thirty-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. So we would like to suggest to go with CDWG. Um, this lab is, was installed in twenty thirteen. So it is definitely time to upgrade it. And I know that Dr. Stevenson had budgeted for this up upgrade this year.
So these are programs that cannot be run from the students' computers?
Correct, and we really did take a look at that. We, these are CAD programs, auto design, so our AutoCAD programs, so it's um, everything takes a graphics card and it takes um Windows operating system to run what we're trying to run. So um, we we looked at some virtualization and this was the most cost effective. So that that's why we went with this route.
And Jan, just to add to that, um, the lab at, there were two labs at Miller and there are labs at the high school that are connected to PLTW and they're on a replacement cycle. So I think it's, I think they were six five or six years old. Um, so it was time for them for sure. Um, we did Miller over the last two years and then it's part of the bigger PLTW budget that we used, it use annually for um renewal, subscription costs, consumables um as well as technology and professional development.
Okay. That's a good program.
Other questions?
As I say, we got some really nice accolades um for our project Lead the Way um distinction um just last week.
May I have a motion to approve the pri, the Marshalltown High School Project Lead the Way Lab as presented um at thirty-one two fifty?
Guinness, moved. So moved.
Untied second.
Thank you both. Um, Guinness, untied. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. Sorry, nay. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Amy. You're off the hot seat now for a while. Moving on to the handbooks that were presented at our last meeting. I believe the addition to the transportation handbook has been the homeless um statements that were in all of the other handbooks. Uh, Dr. Shutey, have there been any other additions or changes in those?
Uh, the only addition to any of the handbooks was the inclusion of the homeless language that was missing from a few of them.
Any questions? May I have a motion to approve the transportation, preschool, elementary, intermediate, middle school, high school, twenty twenty twenty-one student handbooks as presented?
No moved, fault.
Second, Karina.
Thank you, ladies. Faltas Hernandez, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. The motion carries seven zero. Rex, we're over to you for the transportation software.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I'm here uh after a lot of discussion over the past few months involving Dr. Shutey, uh Josh, Amy, Paulette, myself. Looking at how to improve our software. One of our biggest thing that we uh goal was to uh the district uh communication, parent communication and bringing our software up to that level. After doing a survey of different schools and looking at the schools our size to see what uh was uh they were using. Uh, we came down to really two that uh were being most used in the state. And that was uh TrendsFinder and Traversa uh through Tyler Technologies. Uh, currently we use TrendsFinder and uh we haven't done anything to upgrade or anything. We got the basic uh TrendsFinder program. Uh, and it's uh it did what it's supposed to do, but we need to do have it do more. We went down to Bondran to look at uh what they were using, which was Traversa. And uh what we saw there was really very similar to what uh we were doing here with TrendsFinder. Uh, and so we started looking for other schools that were using uh the software more. And what we were looking for is the number one thing was that parent app to where it's a two-way communication between the us and the parents. So if something happens, we can push out to that bus or that group of people. Uh, what is uh what has happened, if it's delayed or whatever. And the so the parent app will be uh can be either stagnant to start with or can be uh ETA on a time of arrival. And the parent is opt-in. That is their choice whether they want to get that information or not. Uh, so we send them an invite. We're going to do a lot of education to help our parents understand that part of it. But the other thing, nice thing about uh the TrendsFinder software, as I dug into it and we looked at it was one of the things that we're going to be able to do is take a look at route company uh combining. You know, if we wanted to, for some reason, this driver cannot drive right now, how can we assume that route? And through this uh software, we're going to be able to do that and know the impact on the other routes if it would be assumed uh assumed by those routes or maybe split between a couple different routes. So it's going to help us a lot in the dynamics of uh being able to uh better utilize our vehicles and our pickups uh places. Uh, because on this uh with the new software, we'll be able to identify where we want to pick up and it's going to tell us the best pickup point. And uh the distance from that. Uh, so it's going to help us in many ways. Like if a road's closed, it's gonna, we can put in there, the bus can't travel there. It's going to give us a recommended alternate route for that. So we're looking at uh go stay with TrendsFinder. Uh, we're already uh there. We just upgraded. Uh, we're not into a long-term uh commitment uh which is a year by year with uh TrendsFinder. Uh, the one thing that we do would need to add would be the Zonar, which would give us the GP uh GPS for the parent app app to work and also for us to know where our buses are. And you just passed a board policy about uh knowing, reducing the uh time that a bus is sitting idling. Uh, with Zonar, we'll be able to no uh donate that on each bus, how much time that bus is idling and uh and being able to work, do some work there to meet the board policy that we have just put in place. Uh, so it's going to help, uh this pro process is going to help us. We're we're looking at two different programs, TrendsFinder and Zonar. Uh, Tyler Technologies and Traversa again are are two. They uh the strengths of them is that they're they're intertwined a little bit better than what Zonar and TrendsFinder are, but eventually uh there's a partnership uh being discussed between uh Zonar and TrendsFinder, who knows? Uh, but it with uh Traversa, we're looking at uh, they wanted a three uh three-year commitment to to join with them. And I don't know if we're in that position to make that type of commitment without making sure of all the nuances that go with that. So just for this first year uh to implement uh the uh TrendsFinder software would be about, would be twenty-three thousand. And then the ongoing between and then another twenty-six thousand for the the uh Zonar uh would be the two costs for about forty-nine thousand dollars. And then the ongoing annual cost for both those would be twenty-six thousand one fifty uh for both those, thirteen five fifty for the TrendsFinder and twelve thousand six hundred for the GPS. So the recommendation uh when we move down to uh May eighteenth for you uh would be to take a look at approving that request.
Amy, could you scroll down on the um recommendation, please? Thanks.
Um, be my, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Rex, um, I didn't understand how much money you're asking us to authorize you to spend both upfront and annually. Can you just kind of cut to the chase and give me that number?
Yep, uh upfront for would be forty-nine thousand ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents. The ongoing would be twenty-six thousand one hundred and fifty.
Okay, and where does this money come from?
Uh, it would be out of uh, Paulette would need to correct me, but would be out of our uh transportation uh funds that we use.
And is this something that was budgeted at the beginning of this year or this is extra money we have or?
Actually, the the cost for the initial equipment and such would be paid for out of sales tax funding. And then the annual cost would be out of the transportation budget.
This is something, Paulette, that we budgeted for when we approved the budget in March and we thought we were going to spend this and this was all like in line with what we budgeted when we passed the budget?
Well, we do have some savings in transportation since we haven't had any students. Um, so that will, that will cover that.
So then the answer is no, we didn't really budget for this, but we have some extra money.
Correct.
And then next year, we're going to have to budget more money for this uh annual software GPS license stuff.
Correct.
And so and so we think that the efficiencies gained from the software are worth the fifty thousand dollars. And then an additional twenty-six thousand dollars a year?
I I would say yes, because it's going to make a better communication with our parents and uh make our routes a little bit more efficient and and timing and usage. And the other thing, as we go to uh seatbelt buses, being able to make uh get the right number uh buses in the right area for the number of kids is going to be critical as we move forward.
And the how about how many students do we have riding buses?
Uh, right now, our number of students uh on a daily basis is right around uh fifteen hundred uh and just depending on what sports and season stuff, sometimes it goes up up to about seventeen hundred.
Other questions?
With the savings that we've had by not busing students these last couple of months, does that cover the cost of this fifty thousand? With the savings that we've had by not busing students these last couple of months, does that cover the cost of this 50,000? Will that cover the cost that we were not expecting?
Well, the, the 50,000, the hardware, initial hardware cost would be paid for out of sales tax.
Okay. And we have enough of the saved money to pay for the 26,000 then?
The annual cost would come out of the general fund. The hardware costs would come out of the sales tax fund.
Okay, you said something about having. Saved money in transportation because we haven't been busing kids?
And that's general fund. Our transportation savings due to, due to no busing during the emergency is a general fund savings.
And so how much has that been?
I cannot tell you right off the top of my head. You figure we, our annual transportation per mile costs are over $7. So however many days times however many miles. That we have not traveled for that would be a rough estimate.
Is this the first time, Rex, that we've heard about this sort of software? Just the first time it's been presented to the board?
Yeah, because we've had Trans Finder and we were looking at how we could. Connect with our parents. And this is the first time it's been brought forward to talk about and bring that forward. We've been spending, like I said, the last few months are internally looking at what we need to do to have better communications all the way around.
Three to, three to four years ago, Don Meyer, our former transportation director, had recommended that we go with Trans Finder. Instead of the system we had been going with, I believe it was Edge Log. But at that time, what he recommended was a very bare bones system that. Still, as we, we found out later on, had pretty antiquated. Communication and capabilities. And so the district has actually been studying this the past two years. We spent a year with the Josh Wesley's last year here. We spent a year looking at different systems. Paulette, Rex, Josh and I. And then further research was done going into this year with Amy here. Where Rex was not only reaching out to other transportation directors and districts of comparable size. But actually going and visiting them and talking to them firsthand and seeing firsthand. How these systems worked and what their true feelings were on them. So it's been about a two-year study. This is going to significantly increase our ability through transportation to effectively communicate with all riders' families. That we don't currently have a smooth. Way of doing right now, that in and of itself, from a safety standpoint, I think is significantly worth it. I think it's also going to allow us on-time monitoring of our routes. And, and honestly, parents through. Be able to see at any time where their children are on those buses.
I think it's also worth stating that that GPS unit can really tell you a lot about. How the bus is being driven and, you know, just where it is at all times. So there's a whole nother safety component to ensuring that people aren't speeding and, and that sort of thing.
Our next board meeting, as long as this is just a discussion item for this evening. Between Rex, Paulette, Amy, Dr. Shutey. For our next meeting, you could have a list of ways that this upgraded. Trans Finder platform could help us. For instance, things that happened during this school year. That our system was antiquated and we could not do what we needed to do. For instance, with bus accidents and so on. Maybe if we had a list of the things that the new platform would do for us, that would help us understand the expense.
Be, I think your point, your point is good, B. I would say that if we have been researching this sort of expenditure. For this period of time, like Theron and Rex described, that if it was me in my business, I would ask somebody to come back and say, okay. Tell me why it's worth this much. Tell me how I'm going to save money. Tell me, you know, quantify for me. Why this is worth 50,000 bucks and then almost 30,000 a year. And so before I'd say yes to it and before I'll vote yes to it on the 18th, somebody better say, yeah, here's what. We get out of it. This is what it's, why it's worth $30,000. You've given me a lot of. I'll say fuzzy stuff benefits. Now boil it down to the numbers and tell me why it's worth that much.
One of the issues that would be, I think, good to address, because I think, Rex, that you've mentioned it, but you haven't. It's hard for me to understand exactly how it works and I don't have to know very every detail. But I do know one of the issues at the beginning of the year was bus drivers not knowing for sure who was supposed to be on their buses. And parents not being sure what time their children would be showing up at their houses, which are two huge things. So if you could show us maybe how this program will improve our ability to communicate with our bus drivers, with our parents. For instance, a child's mother is sick and he has to go to his aunt's house, you know? How do we make, how will this program help us make sure that child gets on the right bus to get to the correct household? And the person knows they're coming and knows when they're going to arrive. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense. And that's in that two-way communication from the parent to us and then us to the driver. Making them aware. So that's all in that, that process of that two-way communication. And what I did from up above are objectives that I went down and couldn't. Did the basics of what this does and did which each point objective or strategy have met down below. We did not do the dollar amount or analysis as Mike had. Referenced, I will take a look at that and see what we can come up with that. But that gives you. The, the things that we run into, you know, getting kids moved around where they need to be from daycare. Because they change those a lot on us and everything. So. You know, there, there's so many things with this of what, you know, right now we do a lot manually that we're going to be able to do with this. So we'll look at what Mike's request is and, and bring forward. And again, here are some things that, the objectives and what it's supposed to do. And the strategies that we have talked about internally of how we, how it's going to improve what we're doing.
Rex, what makes me uncomfortable is when I asked the question about was this budgeted? And the answer is, oh, we have sales tax money. And I assume that sales tax money isn't an unlimited pot and we have priorities on what sales tax money should be used for and spent on. And if you've been looking at this, or if the district's been looking at this for as long as Theron says they have, you would think that this would be budgeted. And planned for, and the answer was, oh, there's extra sales tax money. And so that doesn't feel like we've planned enough financially for this expenditure. Or prioritized or triozed the expenditure versus everything else we could be spending sales tax money on. And as a board member, to me, it seems like the priority of what we spend money on ought to be top of the list. And so I, I'd like a better understanding of that. And Theron, that's probably a question to you as much as anything.
Yeah, and, and as we were working through both the summer. Improvement projects as well as the tennis court project, we, we knew we were going to need. Have available to us if we were to decide to adopt a new transportation system. Some sales tax in order to accommodate that, you know, from a district standpoint, we, we knew that. But, you know, the increased general fund cost for the annual expenditure. Was going to need to be taken into account, which we're in a position that we can handle that. But I think what Paulette was saying is we can even handle it better now. Because there are significant savings that have been had. Due to the school closure as far as transportation costs were concerned.
Correct, and that, that would be in the current year. And then please understand that the line item budget for next year has not been. Has not been created yet. I mean, we have a budget framework, which it fits into, but we haven't created the line item budget for next year.
One question, when I look at this, it's really not adding a great deal of cost per child that's riding the bus. I think it comes out to about $50, which is not outrageous. When I consider the importance of making sure these parents know where, or how the parents would feel, knowing where their kids are. And when their children are expected to arrive at home, when they're going to get picked up, that type of thing. What does it generally cost us? This is something I really don't know. What does it cost us to transport a child per year? I mean, how does that $50 compare to the total cost of transporting these children?
We file an annual transportation report with the Department of Ed each fall. And that transportation report calculates basically a cost per mile. And our cost per mile is just over $7 for last year.
Okay, so if we were looking at cost per mile with this particular, we're looking at the. 75,000. How many miles do we have, I guess? That's what you're usually reporting?
Yeah, and so when we embarked on this research, I don't think our intent was ever to really cut costs. The main focus was how can we communicate better with our parents and families? How can we be more efficient? Not how do we reduce costs? So I don't think we ever went into this thinking that we were going to save any money. We went into it knowing that it was going to cost. Probably more money because the system that we were using was just a very basic. Basic platform and we were not, you know, implementing any advanced features like we're looking at for with the GPS. And the, the student ridership and such. So I don't think we're going to see. A significant or any cost savings.
I wasn't.
Question.
I do have a question. There's a recommendation on the last page to hire another dispatcher. What is the estimated cost of that?
There you go, it's a good question.
Right now is, I haven't had a chance to put the, put the pen to paper that. That was just a thing that we wanted you to look at. Thank God. We'll come back on May 18th with that. With just the length of time that we're running programs and the length of time of coverage, making sure that the office is covered. We're just wanting to put that before you, that if we can add someone, we like to get them involved in this early on training. So that they know how to run the software as we go forward. But we have not yet put a dollar amount on that yet. We just want you to think on that and we'll bring that forward as we move forward.
Yeah, we've done a comparative analysis with other districts and we're short-staffed. Compared to other districts of our size and with our ridership. We do not have full coverage for the 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM timeframe that we do a majority of the. Transporting of our kids. And so we'd like to kind of do a split shift with two administrative assistants slash dispatchers. To have fuller coverage of that time in addition to Rex being there. Because basically, when our current administrative assistant and dispatcher leaves. Rex becomes the dispatcher.
If I could just summarize for a moment. I think that board members have asked questions about. Cost per pupil, have asked questions regarding what makes this different and better? Why do we need this over what we have already had? I kind of likened that to let us know what situations we've had. That our platform that we're currently using seemed to be outdated and we needed more. I think that those things will need to come back at our next board meeting. Before we can take this and make a motion and any kind of decision on purchase of this material. Are there any other questions before we move on? Rex, do you have any questions for us?
No, I don't. Thank you. And we'll bring back some information for you.
Thank you. Paulette?
Yes. So what we are, we have a resolution before you this evening. To start the process of renewing our instructional support program funding. The ISL or this instructional support levy is, is a program that allows us to increase our district regular program budget. By about 10% or by 10% up each year. And that is funded through a combination of property tax and income surtax or just property tax. We are going, next year will be year five of our current resolution. And so we need to start the process of renewing that. But what I'm asking for tonight is permission to set the public hearing for the May 18th board meeting. And publish the notice of public hearing. In the newspapers so that we can have, have that discussion on the 18th.
So what you're asking is tonight, you would just like for us to give you permission to. Set a public hearing for the possible continuation and participation in the instructional support levy.
Correct. We'll set the public hearing and I will publish that in the newspaper. And then we'll have the public hearing and take action on the 18th.
Are there any questions for?
I'm sorry, Jan, did you have a question?
No, I was just going to make the movement, but I forgot to wait.
Feel free, Jan, go right ahead.
Okay, so moved, McGinnis.
McGinnis Miller, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay? Motion carries seven zero. Moving on to my favorite part. We're to board policies. We have, go ahead, Theron.
Yeah, so as far as first readings are concerned, all of these came before you at the last board meeting for review. There's one policy that Rex had put forward relative to 711.10. School bus passenger restraints, which is in response to new law and regulations. And then we have 11 policies that were. Reviewed as a result of updates that I S B made to the 200 series relative to school boards.
Are there any questions on these policies that have already been presented?
Yeah, on, it was 201.7, it would become 200.1. The organization of Board of Directors, organization of the board. The, the deletion there and, and then it leaves.
Amy, could you put that up?
Yeah, that one. That deletion in the second paragraph where it picks up with these elections, maybe by written ballot without nomination. But it's not clear what elections that's referring to. I mean, I, it's referring to elections of officers of the board, but it doesn't.
Indeed.
Yeah, we can revisit that and bring that back at the next meeting.
Right, and I I wonder if it would make. More sense or some sense to move what's left there that these elections may be to the end. Of that pair, that new paragraph about the organizational meeting.
Right.
Yeah, well, it will come back, so. I think it can be reworked and you can bring that one back at the next meeting, Darren.
Yes.
That that was the only one I had any any saw anything or had a question about me.
Other questions?
Um, I had some conversation today even.
Bob, you're muted.
Yeah, I know. No, I'm trying to, I'm I'm going to toggle back and forth, so I'm going to have to do this real quickly, but. There we go. Now I'm unmuted. With in relation to. Two oh two, what is currently two oh six point one, what would what would become two one six point two? The board member orientation, so. I'm not saying that the language here is. Flawed, but rather rather. That I believe the newly elected members, I'm going to speak out of turn if I need to there and I'm open to be corrected, but. I I don't think that we have been oriented. As this policy suggests.
Which portion of the policy do you feel you've not been oriented on?
Um, so I mean, I can, I don't know if we have to go into a lot of depth here, but. An orientation meeting with the superintendent administration, the board president, which will include introductions and a review of board policies. And and then and then informational work session, including but not limited to. The district strategic plan, financial condition, capital plan, board committees, district information, and list of resources. If if there was a session where we looked at the district strategic plan, financial condition. And capital plan in some depth, I don't know what that was.
Okay. So are you saying that?
I'm not opposed to this. Yeah, I'm not opposed to this particular amendment, but I think that in terms of of creating or. Rest rewarding policy, we we need to take this particular one. And it's old and it's new form if we adopt a new one. We need to have another, some kind of orientation for new members that includes those elements.
So what you're saying is there's not really a problem with the way the policy is written, but we have not been implementing it.
There you go.
Okay. But are you opposed to the way that it's written is what we're at right now?
No, it's just that I don't know when the topic would come up again, so I needed to discuss it now.
Are there any suggestions for change in this policy?
Not by me, no.
Okay. Are there other questions or comments about the policies as they're presented?
Oh, are you are you looking at all of them?
Um. All of the. Policies that were presented at the last meeting, not the two new ones.
Okay. I had, I'm I was trying to pull up the policy. It's hard for me to read from the screen you've got up here. I made notes when I read through them. And. On and maybe I'll just change my mind when I see it again, but two oh four point six to two ten point five. It says one day. As to when you're scheduling meetings. Public notice will indicate the time place and then the toughness will be posted on the board. Well, I've got my note says omit one day before it's rescheduled, but at a minimum. It's redundant. You said something twice. And the public notice will be posted on the bulletin board or another prominent place clearly designated. For posting agendas in the central administration office, at least one where it's scheduled, but at the minimum twenty-four hours. Notice needs to be given. If you just said. At a minimum of twenty-four hours. Before it is scheduled, you would not need to say both of those. Aren't they saying the same thing?
And I think that language is from I A S B and it and they could be different, but in our situation, they're not.
Okay.
It you could have, you could have that it was posted by the administration office five days before the meeting is scheduled. But the legal requirement is twenty-four hours. So in our case, the one day posting internally and the twenty-four hour notice. Legally are are the same.
Okay, that's why. Okay, I see what you're saying. Okay. Um. I'm having trouble reading my notes. I should have made up sugar light was better before we got here. Oh, this is really, again, it's not a board policy. It has to do with these website and finding the calendar, and I did find it on there. So. Oh, just making sure that the meetings, when you public, when you put them on the public notice. I think these meetings also should show up on the school website calendar and they don't always. I don't know if that needs to be in the policy, but I think it needs to happen. And they aren't always there.
Think there's, is there a link to board docs right on our homepage, I think? I don't know, maybe there's not.
Yes, there is.
Okay. Yeah, the link to board docs would serve as that purpose.
It would, but I think for the purpose of communicating communicating with the community at large. It could go on the calendar page as opposed to a separate board docs page. If you're making your school board meetings open to the public so they can sit in on them and you want them there. It's just a suggestion.
So are you looking at the school calendar or the athletic schedule calendar?
I believe. It's actually not showing up on either one. If you go on to the school website, let me open it up here. Wasn't the other day when I checked it. Okay, so I go in the Marshalltown Community School System. Then I go into. See alerts menus calendars. You have a tab cylinders. When you hit calendars. You get athletic or school. I don't believe the school board meetings show up on either one of those. Once you probably shouldn't be on like athletic, but it should be on the school calendar is what I'm saying.
So.
No, that's not what I'm looking for. No, I wouldn't. Where's a calendar that says like what meetings are happening? Do we have a calendar?
Jan, sorry to interrupt. That is under our school board tab on the website, the board meeting dates. Should be toward the bottom when you do that dropdown menu.
I see where it is. So, okay, yeah, that's still not what I'm thinking. Okay. Maybe I can talk to. The idea I have in my mind probably doesn't have to do with policy. Maybe I can just talk to Adam later about it, about a way to make. The whole idea of when people are meeting and. More transparent to the public, but I'm not sure it's a policy issue. It's just a thought. I looked it up when I read that. And I thought it wasn't very easy to find.
May I have a motion to adopt the new two eleven and the new seven eleven point one zero?
Two eleven and seven what? Oh, those two, okay.
So moved.
Second, Bob Untee.
Miller Untee, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose the same. The motion carries seven zero. Now I'm looking for a motion to amend all of the rest. With the exception of the two new regulations.
Sorry, I want to, I want to ask about. What is currently tool four point seven that would become two one oh point six, the quorum for meetings? It appears as though that would allow for the possibility of a quorum being three persons present. It says three or four.
It depends on how many are on your board. It would be three if there are five on your board. It will be four if there are seven on your board.
That's not what this says, though.
Could we just say majority of board members?
Majority of the board members.
Just because three out of five is more than and four out of seven is more than half. Is that what you're trying to get at there?
Or would be a quorum on a seven member board, three would be a quorum on a five member board.
Board members.
I understood I understood that when I read it, but I agree with Bob. It's not what it says.
Perhaps we can just select four then.
I would be happy as a clam about that.
It'd be fine.
Are we good with the others? Two oh one point seven, two oh one point eight, two oh four four. Two oh four five R, two oh four six, two oh four nine. Two oh four seven, two oh four twelve. Two oh six point one and four oh four point one R two.
Two oh one seven needs to come back, B.
Pardon me?
Two oh one seven needs to come back.
Correct.
I I don't know that I have. Um. Yeah, I think they're okay. Actually, the one I had a question on that I found my question, you already went through. I'm not sure it's something that needs to be in the policy. It's just. The whole idea of the kids being bust in seatbelt. Seated in the buses. How how are the drivers supposed to monitor that? But more of a logistics question than a policy.
Monitoring is going to come under an administrative regulation under the board policy. The board policy cannot dictate how something occurs. That becomes an administrative rule.
Makes sense.
So we're back to two oh one point eight through four oh four point one R two. To be amended and waive the second reading.
We all make your motion. Heitman, so moved.
Second, Faltis.
Heitman Faltis, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The motion carries seven zero. We have two oh one point seven coming back at the next meeting. Now we have. Two new policies, Dr. Schutte, for. You to go through.
You say that with a smile on your face.
Obviously, can't you tell?
So we had some inquiries that were related to. Providing directory information to outside entities as. We've been headed especially in relationship to the seniors. So as we were reviewing our policies and. Comparing to I S B, we identified the regulation five oh six point two. Our one which I S B had, but we did not that we're recommending that we adopt. In conjunction with our policy. And then when we compared that to the exhibit that we have five oh six point two E one, we noticed there was. A difference with the dates between those two, so. We've decided to be consistent with the I S B regulation by changing. The date that's on the exhibit to September fifteenth. And these two items would come back to you at the next meeting. With. The policy two oh one point seven that needs to be amended. And hopefully there.
Are there any questions? Are there any questions for Dr. Schutte at this time? Okay, Mr. Sotters, any items of note and communications?
Um, yeah, so I I'm happy to obviously heard the discussion a few minutes ago. I'm happy to talk about any ways we can make it easier for people to. Know when the board is meeting and and doing things like that. I mean, it's especially important, I think, since we're all meeting virtually and. You know, it's it's easier maybe when we're in a physical place to meet, but that's not really happening right now. So I'm happy to, I'm open to those conversations. And then other than that, I just wanted to mention. I I don't remember if I've mentioned this maybe at a previous meeting. We, in conjunction with Dr. Stevenson in the curriculum and instruction department. I have been sending out. Voice messages on Sundays as well as texts and emails to ensure that folks know about the. Updates to the Learn From Home website as well as the paper packet drop offs. These are not necessarily changing from week to week. We just really see a. You know, it's it it feels like a missed opportunity when we don't remind people of that sort of thing. So that will be continuing on. Through throughout the situation where we're doing the paper packet drop offs as well as updating the Learn From Home website. It's just a little reminder. I'm going to be crafting it this week. We're going to make sure it's high quality, English, Spanish translation. Both in the text and in the voice message. So and that's what I had for my update. Unless there's any question.
Looks like our reminders are slim. Our next meeting will be. May eighteenth. We'll see you all virtually, I'm sure. Has anyone been at a meeting virtual or otherwise since we last met?
Um, I attended one with Nora and Paulette and Theron and Karina for the secretaries, the issues they were having with the salary schedules.
That will come up under our exempt session for negotiations if you want to hang on.
Okay.
Uh, what have we done tonight to improve education for the Marshalltown students?
We have come up with some plans for making sure they have internet access during this time when they are. Not able to go to school.
We bought a lot of devices.
And cases.
And carts.
We. Have started down the path to renew our instructional support levy, which is. A vital resource for supporting our kids.
Is the ordering.
Go ahead.
Is the ordering of carts a show of optimism that we'll be back in the buildings in the fall?
Let's all be optimistic. Any items for future agendas? My quote this evening comes from Bryant McGill. Um, he is an author and a social media activist. He says, "The greatest joys in life are found not only in what we do and feel. But also in our quiet hopes. And our labors for others. May your hopes be met. And may your labors for others be joyful to you as well." That's my wish for you over this next couple of weeks. As we continue to. Discover new things about our homes. We need to go into closed session for the quarterly evaluation of the superintendent. You have another website on which to change to. So in that vein, let's. So in that vein, let's take about ten minutes and meet back on our Google site at seven fifteen. Thank you all.
Thank you.